I'd like to call the finance meeting Wednesday, October 4th. First up on the agenda is the approval of August 2nd, 2023 minutes.
No approval.
Tag it.
It's been moved in second and the minutes be approved. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That just required my signature. Next up is a transfer of $1,346.21 from County General to Prosecutor line items 10, 238, and $1,790.04 from County General, which would be the council contingency line in County General, to Prosecutor line item 10, 870 for salaries through the remainder of the year.
No approval.
Second.
It's been moved in second and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, and I'm gonna have Kathy jump in and help me whenever I need help. We've had several discussions, and I can't remember what we did exactly at workshop in regards to the 240, the magistrate and the clerk salaries, and I also look back here at Kim. But those employees, they were being paid out of two different places, correct?
Yes.
Did we switch that at workshop? And we may need to, we may need to have, Mark?
I think it's 70, I'm sorry, deferral, the deferral 7102 employees that we moved that you're talking about. We haven't got to the 4D court people yet.
Okay. So, if, if we could bring the 2024 budget up on the screen, please.
Turn it on.
I think we had discussed at workshop on the salary ordinance itself. We have a column at the very right side of it that told, that actually lists the compensation. And that's for all of the positions we have that are paid out of various funds. So, I think you're looking more at a budget issue and not a salary ordinance, the way I'm understanding it, just to make that clear. And I had talked to Max about that yesterday. Because we have that, we're not increasing their annual salary, it's a funding issue unless we're, unless there's gonna be a new fund. Are you just moving money into a existing fund?
We're going to propose to pay those employees total salaries out of 8895. So, it's not a, it's not a salary change, but it's where they would be paid.
So, so it's the two employees that are currently in Fund 4902, which is the 4D court. So, if we move them this year out of their pay, out of 4902, and put them in 8895, and that also is per John Mullers in this case. 8895 being that 4D incentive. And then we would need to correct it or change it for next year, right?
Right. First of all, we want them on the next pay to be paid out of 8895 instead of 4902.
Right.
And then we wanna make that change for the budget.
Correct.
Yes, I think it's just a budget. I mean, it's just a-
It's just where they're being paid out of. There's no, no increase in pay here.
And that's kind of monitored and controlled by payroll, because I talked to Amy about it. And so, this happens all the time over going back between different funds. So, I feel 100% confident with her that she's doing that and all that, and she's aware of it. I've had a conversation with her.
The council probably needs to okay
Yes.
that it's paid out of 8895 instead of 4902.
I would still move it. Tag it.
Okay. It's been, we okay Kathy?
Yeah, yeah, we're good.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And I will tell Debbie and Mark, I had asked for the form for us to sign to be in my mailbox, and I didn't get it. So, I'll, I'll grab one later.
This form's here. I never had anything.
I didn't ask you. I asked, I asked somebody else, and they got busy. So, that's okay. But we'll get the form and sign it before the end of, before we're done today, and we'll get that to you.
Okay, appreciate it. Okay. Then we have the 4902 account. And basically, that account is, is in the red. We're going to transfer money or appropriate money. And then, that will, give that a chance to build up a little bit. 8895, it is one that, like I said, has probably, once we transfer 250,000 from 8899, the new clerk, to 8895, has about a half million dollars in it. And that, we did have 60,000 that was in the council budget to be paid to 4902. And at this point, I guess, what are, what are the thoughts on whether we do that or just leave it and?
So, my thoughts are, it's already in this year's budget. Go ahead and have Mark move it. Because as of today, it's 168,078.07 in the red. So, that would at least get that down. So, if we have to do an additional appropriation, it's a little less. So, if Mark would go ahead-
I have, well, I have a claim ready to move that 60,000.
Okay, you do have that.
I haven't read it. I haven't signed it yet till we decide what to do. So, we got that here.
That would help, I think. Just go ahead and take that off.
It was the intended purpose all along. It just hasn't, it hasn't, it was budgeted that 60,000 just has not been transferred to that fund.
It would have been all right if it had been taken from the council's budget in past years. And it was, there were two or three years that were 60,000, and then there was one year that was 90,000. Why? I don't know. But there were three years that it just failed to get transferred.
Right.
It was in the budget. It reverted back to the general fund. And, and so, the money was budgeted in prior years. It, it was general fund money. We still have it. Once we transfer it, that, you know, that will bring school-
And so, the money that we had budgeted every year, we got reimbursement for from the state because, you know, the court would put down that we had put that in. We just didn't get that physically moved in the bookkeeping, in the auditor's office. But this has been, like Mark said, several years. How that got missed, I don't know. But going forward, when I talked to John Mullers at the state, we could, rather than us taking 60,000 out of council budget, because there's always money, incentive money that we can't spend, well, we can use it here. So, by putting the employees there and so forth, we won't have to have that 60,000, and somebody's gotta remember to move it and all that. So, that kind of fixes that. And we'll take it out of 8895. And so, by moving the two employees out of the 4D court, their, their payroll and so forth out of there into their, the 4D incentive fund, then that leaves, you know, less of a burden on what comes into 4902. And they can continue using that for supplies and equipment and the other things they need. And then we'll keep using these other incentive funds for salaries and payroll, which are legitimate expenses. So, that would help with the budget going forward.
So, we don't, we don't need a council motion here. We just need to sign a claim.
And I have it prepared already.
Transfer that 60,000 over.
So then, Tony, are we going to, once, once the additional appropriation is done, and like at workshop, we can fix where this is in the red just? Okay.
We just need to see if we need an additional appropriation. We have the funds available.
Okay.
Um.
Where do we transfer it up from?
Well, we need to see if we have enough in council contingency. Do we, well, I thought you was taking it out of 8895 and put it in 4902? To cover the red, the deficit, are you taking that from general? No, we can't, we can't do that.
No.
So, it's coming from general?
We can't.
The question is, could we take money out of 8895 and, and transfer to 4902? And I think the answer's no.
No, the only way to spend money out of 8895, which is the main, the big 4D incentive fund that the clerk and the prosecutor share, is to pay something out of there. You can't transfer it. You can't-
So, we have-
It's gonna have to come from the general fund. Let's go.
So, what you're saying is you're gonna leave the 60,000 in the budget as, for the debt. You're not gonna transfer it?
No, we are, we're writing a claim for the 60,000. Then we're gonna take it out of our budget for next year, though, right? So, I probably need to do that.
So, let's wait till we get to that.
Okay.
Because there's, there's one other thing here, too. In 4902, supplemental public defenders fund, they are in need of a new printer. Correct? Kathy?
Yes. And actually, that fund, I think, is 1209. I think you said 4902, but let me find that. I think it's 1209.
It would be-
Oh, 1200, wait. Yes, supplemental public defenders-
Oh, it'd be 1200.
1200.
Fund 1200. We need to create a line item for equipment in Fund 1200 supplemental public defenders fund. We need to do that first. Do I have a motion?
So, move.
Second.
A motion is second to create line item 1200 equipment in Fund 4902. All those in favor signify by saying-
Is it, wouldn't the line item-
1200.
Yes, 1200.
The line item.
We don't know the line item number. But the line item number, I think, would be 33620?
No, I don't know that one by heart.
Okay. I think that is the number for equipment and maintenance or whatever, I think.
We have a motion and a second to create line item for equipment in Fund 1200.
Yes.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do we know how much that?
We do. It's, the printer copier is $6,539. It's $55 a month for that fee that they have for the copies and so forth. And currently, the fee for the copies is coming out of the Public Defenders General Fund budget. We're gonna leave that there, and then just take the machine out of, out of this.
And the fund balance in 1200 is?
At the moment, it's 396,041.81.
And that's what you call contingency fund?
No, this is the supplemental public defenders fund. Yeah. Which also has lots of strings and it's hard to spend.
In Fund 1200, we, we don't have an amount specifically, but we know the copier costs 6599, 6,599. We know there's a monthly fee. So, I suggest that we transfer from the Fund 1200 directly into that equipment line item, an amount of $25,000.
Okay, because they may need something else. Okay.
So, we can pay for that printer copier for them out of Fund 1200 instead of using general.
But the monthly fee will stay where it is in the general fund, so that Mark knows that. Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
So, I move that we transfer 25,000 from 1200 to newly created line item 33620.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we come to jury fees. And Kathy, do you wanna?
So... So, with the, um... So, my, here's what's happened. We have a fund created several years back that had a line in it on account number that kind of, if you picture a large pot, and in the pot are, we have all these different buckets. Anyway, we have discovered that over the last few years, that we have put money into that for jury pay from deferral fees and infractions and different, different things from courts when people have gotten in trouble and have to pay fees and so forth. Anyway, the long, the long and the short of it is, we have money in that fund that we have now separated out, and we've created its own fund so that we can make sure the money is going in there correctly. But we are paying jury fees out of two separate budgets in the general fund. So, we have one for Court Services and one for Superior 3. What I would like to ask, to make it easier for the bookkeepers in the auditor's office and the courts, if we could take the money for this year out of those two budget lines and put them into 2503, then when the court clerks send in their claims to the auditor's bookkeeper, it's always the same number, because we will constantly have money going into that fund. And if we just take those two budget amounts, because otherwise, the clerk or the bookkeeper has to look, is there enough money to pay this one? And if there is, okay, then the next one comes, maybe there's only $50 left. So, then she has to call Court Services or Superior 3 and say, okay, change your paperwork, because there's only 50 left. Now we'll take it out of your budget. That leaves a lot of hassle for them. So, if we can just move that money out of those two budgets into 2503, I think would make life and bookkeeping much easier for the people involved. And then going forward, Tony and I talked about maybe putting in the, rather than in those two budgets, putting in the council's budget, a one-line jury pay, put it there, and then we would move it first of the year. Auditor would move that into 2503, whatever that amount would be.
And 2503-
I'm sorry, 2503 is the new jury pay fund.
2503 is the seven or so thing-
2501 is the, that had all the others next in. We created 2503 to separate this out.
Okay. And you were breaking those down?
Yes.
Do you-
So, that fund today has 675,463.96.
And you have it broken down by how we should allocate it to those?
I have the total amounts. I didn't, I didn't have a chance to get that done either this morning. But my, my recommendation in talking to Tony is, we take the total amount that's in there by, we can pull up reports that show, and Debbie did that the other day. We, she pulled up reports, but I don't think I, I gave her the right dates, so I had to redo it. If we take the total amount and look at the different buckets or accounts, which jury pay fee we have, jury pay fee is one, law enforcement fee is another, miscellaneous receipts is one, charges for services, and I'll have to figure out what that is. And public education, there's another infraction judgment. If we take those and figure out what percent from 2016 to today those are, then we're going to go back to anything prior to that and, and figure a, I know this is confusing. We're gonna figure a percentage of how much from 2016 to today was each one of those items. Because we have, we started with a new financial system in 2016, and we can't get the old records. So, that was over 582,000. So, we just wanna divide that and put these out of this bucket into the current buckets we're using. Because what we found, a lot of these buckets that that statute allows us to use, we had created different numbers for them. Like 1178, now to the top of my head, I don't remember what that is.
It would be, it would be correct to say that in Fund 2501, we do not have each of those seven activities as a separate line item, and that is what we're trying to get to.
Well, we created them, we created them with, the statute created them within the statute. But then when, when it came here, and this was several years ago, in, in, when it got done in the auditor's office, part of those seven were already created in other funds. So, sometimes they got put into this one, and sometimes they got put into that one. Nobody caught on that there were two. And then, over time, it's just, and nobody caught on that the jury pay should have been paid out of here. So, now we just wanna take this and maybe leave the law enforcement, education, because the only money that's been paid out of that in all this time is the Indiana State Police have sent their billing for, for when their training will say Cambridge City Officers and the Richmond Police Department for continuing education. That's the only money that's been paid out of that in, in all the years that we can, we can see. So, if we leave that continuing education one there and move everything else out so it has its own fund, but most of them already do, it's really about two other things that we need to, and we did, we did one. We did the jury pay, and we moved the money for this year. But we would like to go ahead and take the whole bundle, figure out the percentages, and move it into the appropriate ones, and get this money being used instead of just sitting here.
Right. So, I, I think we need to document all that on paper and then do the
Clear as mud.
at workshop, handle that aspect of it. But, um...
Mrs. Williams, would it in a way be better just to have one line of jury pay fees, and then everything be charged to that one line?
And that's, that's what we have. That's what you did. You did, you did that. 2503 is the new one that we created.
But we still have, but we're still gonna pay some out of 4D?
No, you mean the-
No.
The County General.
The County General fund.
So, you're trying, you're trying not to do that. Yeah. What we wanna do, Mark, is there's, in, within 2501, which is the main county user fee fund, that's what it's called. Within that fund, there were seven different items that is people have to pay their infractions and whatever, got divided into these different categories, if you will. Part of those categories in our bookkeeping already had a different fund number. And over the years, when it was quietest or we ceded in, some of it went to the, the original number, numbers we already had. Others went into this big pot, but it was never spent. So, it was like people didn't even know it was there. That's why we have such a large amount. So, now what we wanna do is give everything out of the big pot except for the law enforcement education fee, because that's the only one that's working correctly. And in all of the others, I, I think there's one other one, maybe two in there, that need a separate number. And then take the total money that's sitting here and divide it by the percentage as best we can figure.
Percentages and all that.
Right. And then put those into those funds.
I guess what I'm asking, in councils, but, or the council budget, we now have two line items separated for jury, jury pay fees. Does that count? Am I correct?
There's one in, um-
Court, one in Court Services and one in Superior 3, yes.
Services and Superior 3. County General, though, right? Not council.
Right.
So, the thought, the thought was to combine those two amounts in the budget under a council line item. And then January 1, we actually do a claim that transfers it to 24, or 2503.
Yes, because that would make life so much easier for our people trying to do the bookkeeping.
Absolutely.
And so, all, all jury fees would be paid out of one fund.
And you're gonna do that as a first come, first served basis?
Well, if it's all in there, it, everybody pays out of that one. So, we don't have to worry about who gets the money in 2503. If we move all of the money from the other two budgets there, then it's distributed equally.
And is, is Fund 2503, has it been created?
Yes, that is the new jury pay fund. Yes.
Okay. And it has a line item?
Um, I don't believe it has a line item.
Jury fees just paid out of there. Ron, would it need a?
I, I, you've lost me in there.
Lost you.
Don't need to approve that.
I think what is confusing is that you're talking about funds or revenue funds. And you're allocating revenues that have been received in the past, may have been misallocated, into the appropriate revenue funds. And I thought that was gonna be separated by the seven or eight functions.
I, I thought we were, I thought we were gonna leave it in 2501 and have a line item for each of those seven.
Yeah, that's what I thought. And then, the challenge going forward, once you got that out, those monies allocated, it'd be fund balances populating all those line items. The challenge is getting the people who are claiming these expenses to, you know, have that claim correlate to the proper line item going forward. I mean, you gotta process here. You gotta get the, you gotta get the revenue funds sorted out appropriately. And I think we decided that looking at history was probably the, and doing a historical allocation made more sense. It wasn't arbitrary. Whether you wanted to discount the years of the pandemic, because there wasn't a whole lot of court, there weren't a whole lot of court proceedings going on then, as far as jury goes. I don't know. I, the devil's in the details of looking at those numbers that they-
You know, we, nothing's been allocated yet, but would council rather see it stay in 2502 with seven different line items, or do you want seven different funds? I think that's, that's-
But keeping in mind, most of those seven already have a fund outside of a line in that, in that one. They're already functioning.
Receiving, not expending.
I'm sorry?
We've got receiving account numbers for those seven, but not expending, if I understand correctly.
I think the others are, they're already functioning in and out, so those aren't a problem. It's just the jury pay one that we've now, we've created 2503. And, but I'm thinking that the statute said, and I could be wrong, I've slept since then, but I thought the statute said we didn't need to appropriate the money from this. But we probably do need to have the line item, because that's the only thing you're gonna pay out of that is jury pay. There's not gonna be like supplies and the payroll or any of that sort of thing.
We would have to create the funds if we did separate funds, wouldn't we?
I, I, I would have thought. Yeah, I guess that's, that's all I can say.
I think we should.
I can't believe the stretch of speaking to appropriation. I think it's probably DLGF's guidance as to how they think we should be handling it, and I think that's fine. Again, let's not risk over simplifying. Let's get the revenues where they ought to be, and then we can figure out how to expand out of it. But I think if you're gonna expand out of those for a discrete purpose, there's each such purpose. Because each purpose has a statutory entitlement provision that creates the, the right to make that expended for it's law enforcement, whatever. Then I think it's just a matter of expanding from those and making sure the people that process the claims know which, and then you probably mark in his staff which bucket to take it out of.
Okay. And you're suggesting, you're suggesting to keep it in one fund, seven different line items?
And, and if that, yeah.
The simplest. I'm pretty sure we've got one fund, but we have the different receiving account numbers?
Within that fund, yes.
What, we have, no, not within that fund. I'm saying we have receiving account numbers with the specific labels. That's what I worked with Melanie on some. But as far as expenditures, if you're wanting an expenditure for this one and this one and this one, then I need to create expenditure, because there's different account numbers for the receiving versus the expenditures. And we've been working on the receiving. And I guess I just assume, okay, we've got record of the receiving coming in, then when we go to pay out of it, it would just be like one expenditure jury. But if you're wanting more than that, then I've got to create however many you're saying expenditures. Does, does that explain?
Do you want separate line items, or do you want separate budgets out?
Terminology is, is part, okay. Line items and accounts. Lao calls it accounts, I'm trying to train my brain to talk Lao language. But line items, accounts are the same, is basically the same thing. So if you're wanting different line items for each expenditure, then I need to be instructed to create those. But what we've worked on so far is specific receipt line items, I guess you would say, of coming in. But I don't have anything specific, other than I think there's one, one line item for jury that we, we can use the expenditure line item with any fund. But if you want it specific, I can create specific ones. Does that make sense?
And really, the only one that's an issue, because the all, the others are all, eh, functioning and, you know, the money goes in, the lines are there to expend it because it's on the report. So I wouldn't mess with those, I would just, if we, we've moved the jury pay out, the only one left really is the law enforcement education, leave it with 2501, which is the main one. It's just, the issue comes down to, do we need a line within 2503 that says jury pay fee? And I don't think we do, but I'm not the legal person.
It's called the jury pay fund.
I, I think council has to.
Yeah, it's called jury pay fund, so.
I think council has to approve the fund.
I do too.
We, I, I don't think the auditor's office can just create a fund.
No, we need to do that.
A fund.
Okay, and that's my mistake, because I was working on that and we, and, and what the statute said is you could create, like, rather than putting all of those in 2501, you could have gone from 2501 to 2599. So I thought, because the statute said that, we could just do the next number, so that was my mistake. But we did create that so that we could use it for that and put all that money in there. But then the other thing is to get it out of the other two budgets and put it all there, so anybody using that, it comes to one pot rather than being all open.
I think, I think, I think one, what we need to do is take the fund balance as it stands, and allocate, you know,
Whatever the appropriate percentage, yeah.
Me and Kathy, we need to allocate what the seven purposes are. And then if we want to, eh, whether we do, recommend to do line items for each of those seven, possibilities, or whether we do separate funds, it needs to come, if it's separate funds, it needs to come within council, and council through those funds, approve the transfer out of, um, 2501 to those various funds. But I, I think council has to do that before, and, and kind of show how we allocated the, you know, the balance that's in that account, so. I think this is a, is something for workshop.
In writing.
Yeah.
I think Mark had a question, I'm sorry, Mark.
No, that's, I'm just trying to follow what you're doing.
So, so if we could at least create 2503, because then we've talked to the courts about using that number, because we thought it was legitimate. If we can do that and then talk about moving the, the current budgets into that one, that would be good. Can we do that, and then the rest of this, we'll do at workshop?
Is there an immediacy for that to be done between now and workshop?
What's driving that?
Because we're getting, becoming money.
Jury claims, and we talked to the bookkeepers and said, use this one and we'll call you if there's not enough in this one.
The money is continuous to the end of the year, this comes into us. And we have to be, be able to know where that money's gonna go and if you're gonna have an expense out of it. So we have two different items we have to have, is the incoming number and then the outgoing number. Right now, we have the incoming number, correct? We don't have the outgoing.
But it is also the outgoing number, the outgoing number.
No, your incoming and your outgoing cannot be the same.
They're not the same number.
No, there's a different rece, eh, receipt account number versus an expenditure account number.
That, that part, I just know the fund number, I don't get into the other.
Right, right. We worked on the, on creating the receiving ones with Melanie for that, for, so that when we quietest money and we know which ones those are.
Yeah, I, I think if you did it, the receiving is the fund number. The expenditure would be a line, line item within 2503.
The receiving has its own account number. You have a fund and you've got receipt account numbers where the money comes in, and then you have different account numbers where the money goes out, but you have this one fund.
Your, your call account number is what we call line items.
Yes, yeah, yes, to that.
That's right.
I mean, you're, you're not using our terminology as, as part of it.
What Lao tells us to use on those.
Yeah. Yeah, we're just, we're kind of talking the same thing, but different terminology.
Would it be, if you're gonna do something on that today?
We're not gonna do anything on it today.
Okay. Can I make a suggestion that Mr. Gilliam and I get together so we understand? Help me understand what you want to do, and then, eh, maybe answer your.
We, we need to get together first and decide allocation and
And then we'll, we'll get it.
And we'll get it in writing what we want done. I think is the way to go, bring it, bring it to everybody at workshop, but.
I think it's important to get it in writing, so we can.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
You getting all this, Bobby?
Okay.
Tony, one other one before, I don't know if it's on your list, but back to that 250,000 that the clerk has come to allow us to transfer. I have that little paperwork if you wanna, we need a motion to, to transfer that money.
It's, it's a transfer, eh, the, the clerk has a couple different, eh, incentive funds. One's 8898, which we call the old clerk fund. And it has some harsh restrictions on, on what can be spent out of it. It only has a balance of 36,38590. When the law changed, Ron, you know how many years ago, and, and, and we created a new, a new clerk incentive fund, 8899, eh, it's got a balance of 317,92671. The clerk rarely spends any money, eh, out of there. She just doesn't have a lot of things that, that qualify. It's 4D money, and that 4D money could be transferred to 8895, which we talked about before, is the prosecutor clerk 4D court, eh, general money, which ha, currently has a balance of 351,99310. We're paying eight people, eh, out of that, eh, fund for the 4, 4D clerk. And that's where, if we, we're gonna have the two positions reevaluated, if the salary went up for them, it would also be paid out of this fund. So, eh, the, the question before us is, the clerk is, is willing to, eh, transfer out of her fund, 8899, new clerk, and 40 incentive, 250,000 to be transferred to the general, 8895, eh, incentive, eh, money, where we're paying those employees, eh, out of. Bob, does all this ring a bell to you?
The bell's ringing. Something we've done in the past, it's just, I think we're using different terminology right now.
Yeah.
And we added the two employees from the, from the 4D court in with that 8895 also. So this will help with that.
Are there any questions? Could I have a motion to move 250,000 from 88, fund 8899 to fund 8895?
I move.
Motion in a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And I'm passing the form down for you to sign to get to my funds, please.
Okay. Next up is on the budget and.
Are we county general or non-county?
County general and council budget.
Could we take a short break here?
Weekend, eh, little recess for five, 10 minutes. Okay, let's reconvene, everybody ready?
I just said TMI.
Eh, we talked earlier.
Okay, we're back in session.
It's not easy sometimes.
We talked earlier, eh, in Fund 8895, eh, the two court employees. I've got a note here, I don't. Okay. As, as I think about it here, those two employees are being paid out of 8895 already.
No, it's the two that we're putting in there.
The two out of 4D court.
Okay, those two employees.
Those two. There's four.
Which, which we agreed to do, there is not line items, eh, for those two employees eh, within 8895, eh, so we need to create them. It would be line item 10, 109, title four incentive, and line item 10, 704, title 4D incentive court reporter.
I move we.
And the first one, it should be 10, 109, title four incentive court commissioner, I think it says. So it would be the, the.
The official name.
The official name of that.
I move we create those two line items.
Okay.
We have a motion in a second.
I started saying in fund, 8895.
8895, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yeah, this is kind of fluid, eh, we're kind of do, doing things a little bit on the, on the fly here. Other than, eh, salaries, is there anything else that anyone knows that we need to talk about for the budget?
Do we need to have her remove that 60,000 from our budget? From council's budget?
Yeah, council's budget, there's $60,000.
It's that, that 4D thing that's in our budget every year.
So you make that zero?
Make that zero.
It's, I believe it's 33202.
It is.
Yep.
That's what we're gonna do just before the recess.
And then we need to also take those two employees out of 4902s. Doesn't it have a budget?
Who's budget is that?
4902 is the 4D court.
Is that in the general fund or the non-general?
Okay, I'm in 4902. Which one?
So.
The court commissioner and the court reporter, right? 109 and 10, and the ones we just created, yeah, the first two there.
Yep.
So, that one zero?
Which one is that?
10, 109.
10, 109 and 10, 704.
10, 107, correct?
10704.
Eight out of there.
Yeah. And we'll be, and so.
So what I just did was correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Do we have a, does 8895, which is title 4D incentive, does it have a budget as such? I want to say it does not, but I'm not sure.
And it's, I don't have it, this stuff.
And I think that is correct, because I think that's one you can't appropriate, and so we just have to watch the money in it, okay?
So 8895, we can't appropriate?
No, we just have to watch what we do with it, oh, yeah, it's just.
We change that, Monty's checking on his two, so that might be a change for next year, but we just won't know that for a while. So I think that was it for today. While Mark has, Max has some personnel things, does that?
You mean that we acted on this morning?
Those were.
Yeah, yours were all in grants though, right, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, the health department stuff is.
Okay, so that, so we should be good, I think.
That was just salary on these changes.
Okay.
You asked about other budgets or things. Anyway, the, I copied you on a message, Saw Conservation said they did not receive.
I went back and I emailed it September 7.
Anyway, I, they're short on money in their fuel line this year, and they may need to adjust that. That's what they're saying, but I don't have a number yet from them. I just found this out yesterday.
Okay. What?
Do you know how much they're short?
Saw Conservation. Which they have a general line item, or general fund budget.
Let me get it and share it.
22210. 22210 in their line item.
They're short this year?
They're short this year, they're gonna, they're gonna have a transfer force next meeting.
And they raised it to 25, and we knocked it back to 2,000.
Yeah.
But.
So, what, do we want to let that ride for now, and I don't?
See what happens.
Yeah. But they, they have some money to transfer to cover the 23.
Well, then maybe.
They're about $800 short right now.
Are they? Maybe we should just give them the 25, so we don't have to mess with it.
Let's just change it to 2,500 and that'll be.
We shouldn't have to deal with.
And that's what they requested.
Yeah, it is.
That's what they requested, and then if they exceed that, then.
Stop driving.
That'll be.
Have to find a transfer for it.
Yeah.
So you get that, Debbie?
Yep, she did, she did it.
Actually, where, where are they gonna get the money from this year?
Eh, they don't have a transfer for us to act on, I don't know, but they said they had money to transfer.
I was wondering if we need to increase their bud, total budget, or we can just take where we're getting it from this year?
Could it be?
Lower that.
Was it just unused 2D money or something?
I, I don't know.
Okay. Okay.
Because Jen, the coordinator out there, laughed yesterday for a two-day conference. Because Jen, the coordinator out there, left yesterday for a two-day conference or three, so it'll be next week for she gets some. I'll ask that.
Might be, we could reduce, you know, just keep same dollar budget.
The other thing, we talked about fund twenty-five oh three for jury fees and that would be the only thing that it's used for. I think that has been done and, you know, if, want to see if council's comfortable with going ahead and creating that fund this morning.
I'm okay with it.
Yeah.
Is that a motion, Gary?
Make a motion, yeah.
Create fund twenty-five oh three.
We have a motion and second to create fund twenty-five oh three jury fees.
Jury pay.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And then we need to create a line item thirty-three oh eleven jury pay. Do I have a motion to create?
Second.
Motion and second to create that, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Pass it on down to Kathy for me, please.
Thank you.
Do we have this on a form?
I have to get one. Thank you.
Anything else other than salary?
Did we, and I didn't bring it up in the personnel meeting, because this was on twenty-four, but we had the two increases requested by the prosecutor for two positions, did we say we're not gonna do that?
I think we said anything needs to wait till next year.
On the twenty-four, I'm talking about.
Yeah, oh, okay.
It's on that sheet I gave you on the second page. He asked for an increase in the office manager and the child support supervisor and I'm not sure that we have specifically set what we wanted to do on that.
Yeah. Those two right here. Secretary and the prosecutor, deputy prosecutor?
No, the office manager.
Oh, those two down there?
Yeah. So they're already, it would just, he's wanting to increase to ten, that's...
But not include that in the consideration of the...
If we're coming to midpoint and that, all that, I think we need to see where that falls for these.
Maybe we can do that now with Kim.
I didn't hear, that's why I left here. Child support supervisor? Okay. And the office manager in the prosecutor's office, those two? Yes. What, would midpoint bring them to what they're requesting? Or close? It's quite a bit, but I don't know if theirs went up that, because they may have went up that much anyway. It's currently fifty-four sixty-one for the office manager. I kept me a little off guard, sorry. Okay, sorry. In the prosecutor's budget? Yes. I need to, I need to go to my office and get somebody for it. Okay. This doesn't have a line item, I'm sorry, we're just in a request thing here and they didn't have a line item. It's that office manager right there that you're on, fifty-four sixty-one, uh-huh. And then they also are the child support supervisor, I don't know which one is...
So here's a very fluid situation here, we're kind of trying to get the exact numbers on a couple of these positions to see if the request would already be met if we, depending upon what we did with salaries.
Because we can't just, we can't just single out departments and employees like this, so they may have to take what we come up with.
Yeah, I'm okay with that, I just, I don't think that we did specifically address this request and that's why I want to get that clear.
I mean, it's our practice. It's our practice not to single out departments and give them raises.
That's a pet for fed increase.
Which is more than the midpoint.
Unless that, unless those particular salaries. You've got it. Yeah, true.
Do you have the Irwin report that...
Yeah, she just, I think she just went and got that. I have some of my notes on it, so... It's on email somewhere, I didn't press it.
So, Kim, those two positions, what's their classification?
So, the one in the prosecutor, the higher, it's a comment five, that's as high as it's gonna go.
For the office manager?
Yes. Yes. The child support supervisor and we're trying to figure out what they call it. The child support supervisor, is it in a different? Wouldn't it be in four D instead of the... I think that's the one we just talked about this morning. It's in four D. And we're dealing with that on a separate. Is that one he's wanting reevaluated? Yes, we're gonna have like a paralegal office manager and then a frontline supervisor.
Didn't realize that was the same.
I think it is. It was one in the same, but it probably is, because it's not in the prosecutor's budget, it's probably in the four D. Child support, and that was a title child support supervisor. Yes. Was in Lonnie's office. Okay.
So that specific one is one that we don't want to address right now because it's gonna be by what is the...
Got it, okay. Do you know what it, what it's? It's twenty-one thirty-nine hour, I don't know what its classification is. That one would probably through the external midpoint would be around twenty-one hundred dollars.
What's their classification for that?
We're talking about the prosecutor's office. Child support supervisor also? No, that one's, we're dealing with that, we don't have that. It's one to Irwin, yeah, so we're just dealing with the Mike Shipman's office manager.
Okay.
Correct, right now. She is a comment five long-term employee, so she's, you know, is not gonna get as big of a raise as other ones because of that midpoint. So it's around, looks like it's around twenty-one hundred.
That would bring her to midpoint? The only thing I might say about that, and I know what we've kind of done with people in the past, is she, she is paid out of that incentive and there's always more money there than we can find the uses for, so we, you know, it could come out of that.
But we don't normally, because this would be considered, pull out someone from an office and raise. Because we, yeah.
Yeah, because next time they hire an officer, they're more hired.
Every other fund is gonna end up requesting that.
That would probably put that with what we may do as far as a salary increase, which will be the next topic. That employee would probably be short of what he's asking for.
Yes.
So, do we want to talk about what we want to do on salary and how to get there and then come back to this? Max, if you can remind us. Because I think, I think then we'll know what that difference is. So... To get employees to the external midpoint, it's a little less than one point one, is that correct?
I think that's what we talked about earlier. No, and so I sent back to Max an email, that's not apologizing, what I was in the midst of doing, but I just have not had the time. If there's any way you can, if you're wanting that and not have to make a decision today, I am almost done with it, but what I did is took the Irwin report, took the external midpoint and then I added four columns, so one percent, two percent, three, and I just did four because it's just easy to do. And I came up with each of those grand totals for each classification. I'm like seventy-five percent done with it, if I close my door this afternoon, I can get it done, that's how close I am.
Your last figure on that was?
Yes. It was, yes. Moving target, but yes.
Which I think would be close enough today.
It's close enough for now, it'll be good to have that.
In the property tax new number was about six fifty. Six fifty, we know that the income tax number was like two fifty-one, so let's say two fifty. Those are, those are just estimates, so by doing that, the new money would be about nine hundred thousand. Max, as we are today, what is the decrease?
Okay, with the change that we made, taking the sixty thousand out of the general, I show an increase over last year's budget of seven hundred and four thousand, six hundred and forty dollars.
I'm sorry, seven?
Seven hundred and four thousand, six hundred and forty-one dollars.
The one-time money. We know that it's, it's about two hundred and twenty thousand for a one percent increase, do we know that? In rough numbers.
Is that including the midpoint? No. Yeah, it's not including the midpoint.
Strictly one percent.
That's not including if we do midpoint in those percent, that'll be a little higher.
Right.
Yeah.
Because it'll be after.
After midpoint, yeah.
After midpoint. So let's even say that that would be five hundred thousand, so that's a million six roughly. Well, let me kind of explain where I'm going. We know that there's nine hundred of new money, we know that there's about seven hundred that we have already increased.
She's showing a little bit higher number, but I don't know where our difference is, but we're in the ballpark.
We're in the ballpark. The one-time monies in the past has been at three million and a lot of that has been done for projects. With the ARPA money, we know the next two years, we already have a lot of projects. We have already hit a lot of the major expenses on projects, so it really probably, next year, the year after, you know, I always talk about reoccurring money, feel and looking for a place, we have about two hundred thousand roughly of new money left. What I'm kind of thinking, and we still have some moving parts, is if it takes one point one million to raise to the external midpoint, if we would do a two percent increase on top of that, so we would get them to the midpoint at ten plus two percent, that might, might be a million six roughly. If we reduce the one-time money from three million to one point five, I think that gets us there. And that would give, like I said, the employees, whatever the Irwin report, which is not published as of now, whatever it says, it would increase and some, some employees are going to get...
Quite a bit.
You know, maybe, maybe a five or seven percent. Everyone's gonna be different there, but, you know, some are, some are going to make more from there and then we have the the two percent, but we're getting them to the midpoint of twenty twenty-three.
Yeah.
Not twenty twenty-four midpoint, but we're getting them to the midpoint of twenty twenty-three and then add a two percent increase, I think that is doable. We need to get this established so that the auditor's office can start and HR starting to get the salary ordinance in line, so that we know exactly where we are for workshop. So I'm open for, open for discussion based upon that for a salary increase for twenty twenty-four.
So what are you estimating a salary increase to be for twenty-four?
We're gonna establish that, we have that.
Yeah, we're talking about it right now.
I'm asking is, of course, this thing is fluid anyway till the state decides what they want to do with it. I'm trying to figure out from my perspective, whether you had the money. We've, you're down to thirty-four million total budget for the general fund. I advertised thirty-six. So what will happen, that will be, that thirty-six will, the state will reduce that at the time to whatever you determine to be thirty-four million.
There was how?
Yeah. So if you're sitting there with thirty-four million and the salary, total salary, do we have that offhand of what we're paying salaries? Okay, you're gonna raise what the total salary is by a million five.
But we're taking a million five out of our council contingency, so that's kind of a wash.
I'm just trying to figure out whether you're gonna have enough money or not.
We have enough money.
Is it, we're making it a wash with taking down council contingency.
Plus, we've got a lot of general fund money there. There, that's available.
I mean, our general...
Back to your question.
But we're going to, we're gonna, the new money that we have, we're gonna live within our budget. It's gonna be short or over just a little bit. That's, that's, you know, if we reduce the one-time expenditure by, from three million to one point five, we're reducing the budget one point five, we're going to somewhere, probably somewhere between one point five and one point six in salary increases.
I think we have to remember on the salary increases as well, that there's some employees that are high enough in the range that they won't get the full midpoint impact, is that be correct?
Yes.
I mean, it's...
There's not that many, because we've been doing this for several years, but there are a few.
When you say midpoint, what is that?
It's a study done by Irwin.
Okay.
That they look at other counties of similar size and they determine what the average salary is, they also determine what the average external...
Yeah. Including...
And then you want to get to that midpoint between those counties?
Yeah. And we've got the figures for each one.
And the midpoint raise is considerable, it varies from classification to classification. The highest one would be roughly nine percent, the lowest one is almost seven percent, so we're talking we're talking a considerable amount. As we had, when we did this two years ago, we had employees that had, for whatever reason, moved up in the range and the midpoint raise would put them over that range and so the range caps it, so that's what I'm saying. Even though she's calculated that it's roughly one point one million, it'll be somewhat less because there's a few that won't get the full impact of the midpoint raise.
Yeah, well, it's because they're above the midpoint.
Yeah.
So that one point, a little less than one point one includes everybody, what it takes to get everybody to that, that point, so we're paying on an average.
Out of all funds?
No, just employees.
Just general fund, not highway, not?
No.
And then...
Well, the highway's impacted by this because they're...
But it's not in the million five that you're counting.
But it's not general fund by.
The million five, you're restricting that to general fund. That's what you're estimating?
And that, yes, and that needs to be, will be separated out.
And even though we gave 6.5 last year, a lot of counties gave 10 because of inflation, and we decided to only do this every two years, and we were already behind this year.
So the Irwin study gets them up to the average salary of 2023.
Right.
Yeah.
Then we're giving a 2% increase for pay across the board for 2024.
Well, I would be comfortable with that.
And our numbers are going to be real close. It may even be favorable, you know, overall, but it would be in the council contingency budget. And, excuse me, it would be in the one-timing line item out of council budget. So if you could bring that up, you've got it. It's line item, I can't read it for you.
33952.
So Tony, a question on that. Do we want to just say we're taking that down by 1.5 million? Or do we want to take it down by whatever the calculated amount of the raise would be to keep that?
I think we'll be able to.
Yeah, I think that's what we want to do. I mean, we could even leave that a little bit on the high side, and it's something that we could, at workshop, determine what the amount.
Once we know.
But the impact to the employees' wages and salaries, we need to do now so that it gets calculated, so that at workshop, we've got that. We've got that number.
And so far, the only thing we have committed out of one-time money for next year so far is about $210,000. Things that we've talked with everybody during all these meetings.
And so from there, you know, for the most part, everybody needs to live within their budget.
Exactly.
We don't need anybody coming two months from now and saying, oh, I want to do this. They've submitted their budget, they need to kind of live with that at this point. And, but if emergency comes up, we still have up to 1.5 or wherever that number falls.
So I just want to mention, now you said it's approximately $220,000 for each percent.
Well, it's probably more now. If we bring the midpoint, it'll be a little more than that.
I mean, midpoint, but for each percent is $220,000.
Well, it...
In the ballpark.
Once you get to midpoint, that 2% will be more.
It may be more like 230 once we bring them up to midpoint.
But what I was going to say is keep in mind too, and I have the numbers here from Kim Walton from last year, the money that's returned every year from the general fund that doesn't get spent, that, you know, and the lowest year we had was 2017, it was 1.3 million returned. So maybe could we look at 3% if it's 220?
I think there's too many moving parts this year. I mean, I think everybody would have to agree that...
We made a lot of cuts, so next year we may not get that much of a chunk back either on 24 because we cut a lot of stuff this year.
Yeah.
And also, Kathy, we have to remember that we take that money and spend it that's returned to general fund. That, by putting it in salaries, we're obligated to that forever.
Yeah, I realize that.
And we may not have that forever. Also, when Kim gets her calculations done, we'll know of that. 1.5 or 6 million, how much of that's highway, how much of that's grant? We got several salaries funded by grants. They'll get the raise, but it'll not be coming from general fund money. So that 1 point, if it's 1.6, that could end up being 1.5, 1.4.
And I also gave the worst-case scenario. So when you get the spreadsheets from me, you know, they had vacancies listed. I took those off, and they blacked them out. We need to include every budgeted position. We don't care if it's vacant or filled. So the number I'm giving you is every position that we have, yes. So we don't care if it's vacated.
But that's where we end up sometimes with a little bit of playground too, so that's good.
Yeah, when they're not filled.
When they're not filled, it can be used. It can be, doesn't have to be.
Right.
But they can fill at any time.
Yeah, they can, they can.
And, you know, we've approved those positions. We would hope all those positions are filled, but we know that reality...
I'm very comfortable with midpoint and 2%. I'll make that motion if you'd like me to.
A second.
I'll say it.
We have a motion in two seconds. Any further discussion?
Well, we need to claim, we need to point out as well that I don't think the elected officials are involved in the midpoint.
That is correct.
It's for the sake of the public knowledge.
Yes.
Right, and that 1.1 takes that...
It's to count.
Yeah.
That's right.
It's not going to...
The elected officials, we're only beginning across the board of the 2% that's in this.
Right. Okay, any other discussion?
Am I supposed to change this amount from $3 million to $1?
You've got to wait until we vote.
Okay, sorry.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. What do you want to do about the one-time money? Do you want to leave it at $3 million until workshop, or you want to reduce it to 1.5 now?
Just leave it at the $3 million until we get...
I would leave it in.
It's a number that can be...
And we know the first number.
It may be 1.5, it may be 1.6, you know.
Yeah.
Maybe 1.4.
We'll reduce it while we know for sure what that is, that's fine.
The other possibility is, if you wanted to, is to leave the $3 million there until the state comes in and they determine whether you're over the amount to be collected or not. If you're not, then you have the $3 million sitting there. If you take it out... Yeah, and just looking for a road for you to follow that won't bind you when the state comes in, because we don't know how much money we're going to have. And from what I can see, ending balances in '22 was $12 million. 20, I'm sorry, in '20 was $12 million. The ending balance on the general fund was $11.6. You're not looking at a decline of your balances at the end of the year. And so that would tell me that money that's coming in is not considered in what you're doing. So that if you really want that 300, $300,000.
$3 million.
Yeah, if you really want that $3 million, it would be my suggestion that you keep it there. You can always take it out when the state comes in and tells you you're either over the budget or you're not.
Right.
If you're not, and you want it, leave it.
That's why it's the last number that we're talking about.
I understand.
Yeah.
And, you know...
That's something to think about, Mark.
Yeah, like I said, we may want to make it higher for that reason, but that's a number that we can determine at the end of workshop.
But you can't make it higher than what I advertised.
No, no.
Okay?
Yeah.
But next, in two weeks, we'll know where we're at.
And two, right, once the salary...
But I'm just offering you, my suggestion on this, if you really want that $3 million and you have items that you're going, you know you're going to spend it on, you may not need to spend, if you don't need it, don't collect it, because that's not fair to the taxpayers. But if you really believe as a council, you need that money, and you're going to spend it next year, then leave it. And when the state comes in, cut it out.
Yeah, we won't do projects. We know we don't need $3 million.
We hope we don't.
I do have a question about Max said elected officials aren't included in the race.
No, they're not included in the midpoint race. They're included in the cross-the-board race.
Yeah, they get a raise.
Because I was going to ask about chief deputies, right, okay. Because they're linked to the office holder, right?
Right. So it'd be the office holder times 102%, and then times 75% for chief deputy.
Thank you.
Mr. Plaster has asked to make a comment. Barry said no, I guess he has to sit down.
Thank you, I'll be brief. Thanks for all your hard work on this. I know how much you've all put into this, and I think it's going to turn out very well. I would just reiterate, you know, that we're talking about the general fund in most of these cases, and it looks like you've got a pretty easy fix to make sure you have money in the general fund. Some of the funds might not be as easy to fit that 6% or 8% salary increase into, and so we'll need to look at that and make changes. If the commissioners can help in any way, HR, don't hesitate to ask. The other thing I think we want to point out to people as we make public what those races are going to be, is to also let our employees, remind our employees that there's been zero increase in their health insurance program for this year, and we have added benefits that are fairly significant. So I think we want to make sure that we communicate that effectively to our employees as well, so.
Thank you.
Thank you again for your hard work.
So I have a question then in relation to the Irwin report. Now that we have decided what we're going to do, can we, is it time to make that report available? I mean, two years ago, after we were finished with the budget, we made that report available. Because we're asked, and I'm asked every little bit, you know, where was there a report? I think that we have to disclose that, so void, maybe, or we had that voided. I don't know why we wouldn't be.
Yeah.
That's why I'm asking. I agree, yeah.
Once we've decided that that's what we're doing, if the state comes back and lowers things, it's not going to be wages. We're going to have to cut it somewhere else, so I think it's fine.
You'd want to have a spin.
I mean, it can be available if anybody wants to see it, I suppose.
In some way.
If they request it from HR.
Or it can be put, we can put it on the portal. The one thing I will do is remove names, where we'll just have line items, positions, remove the names, and give the entire spreadsheet. So that's at your pleasure, how you want that distributed.
Put it on the portal.
Yeah. That is, once we...
But it won't be today, so.
No.
Don't worry. Because I got to finish the project for you this afternoon.
Yeah.
So I'll get it done, because I will remove all names.
Yeah, yeah.
So...
Whenever.
So we're officially making that available now?
It's, yeah.
Okay.
Is it our document to make available?
Yes.
Yes.
So when do I get whatever I need to start doing what I need to do?
You'll get that report, and that'll show you the percentages for each of those classifications.
Would we be wise to say that we'll be available in two weeks at the midpoint in time?
At the midpoint.
But we need to go get her a copy.
Yeah, the auditor's office, but maybe to make sure exactly what we're doing.
Yeah, you don't have to.
Make it available in two weeks, once we meet and have your numbers, suggestions.
That's a good idea, after workshop.
So it has to, yeah.
When we actually vote on the budget.
Okay. But she's got to have it now to figure those percent by.
Yes.
And Kim will give you that.
And what I'd like, from your standpoint and your standpoint, because you're calculating them separately, and they have to agree that that work be done by the end of next week. So if there are any differences at all, you've got between a week from Friday and two weeks from today have it done. So that would need to be done by October 14th, I believe. Both HR and the auditor's office could have that done by October 14th.
That's a Saturday.
13th.
13th this Friday.
13th, October 13th.
All right, what a great day.
And so that those balances can be compared, any differences reconciled between the two departments, and everything ready to go for Wednesday evening.
Luckily, yeah, all day, wanted to do it Wednesday, it was great.
Can I ask a logistical question? Okay, I understand this part, but then on the 18th, you still can make adjustments to this. Then I have to go from the Excel to get it into Loud.
You still have two weeks after that. You have till the end of the month. We have a week and a half.
Because going from Excel to Loud is really tedious. So I can't do any of that stuff until after the 18th then, and so I go from Excel to Loud, and then I upload from Loud to Gateway after the 18th. I'm just trying to find out what I got to do.
Well, I think that things that obviously aren't going to be changed next week, you could work on that. But that's your risk. A lot of the budget we have in front of us today
Is set.
won't be changed on the 18th. There's just salaries and some questions.
Maybe that line item right there.
There's a few things that will change on the 18th, but 99% of what is up on your program won't change.
What's your date to have it uploaded? The October 30th or 34th?
I thought I had to have everything done by 18th, so I don't know.
That's for us to approve. And I think you have another week and a half to have it turned in. What's your date?
They're going to adopt the budget on the 18th. This is not an adoption.
Right.
So what you're going to have...
What's your date to turn it in, Mark? What's your date, drop dead date to have it?
My account says 5:43.
DLGF or whatever.
See, I thought everything had been done on the 18th, but now I'm understanding a little better.
Okay, I'm trying to think. We got to get it on Gateway. I think it's sometime in November. Can you do this in two weeks?
I have to have this done by a week from Friday in order to be able to, so we can verify with HR.
Well, they better give you some information then.
Let's just say I'll do the best I can, and I'm bringing Simone in to help me, so hopefully. I never done it, so I have no clue how long it'll take.
And I'll be working with Amy.
Yeah.
I'm going to be doing the salary, I'm going to be working with Amy. What we've always done, and it works out. We work on the salary ordinance together, and then what we will want to do is take, once we agree with the salary ordinance, what we think is right, then we can come to you, and you can look at your budget line items that you have put in, and that's how we'll do that cross-check. That's how I think, that's how we've done it in the past.
That's why I kind of said at workshop, forewarned you that after this meeting...
No, I know, everything, yeah.
A lot of work to be done.
My doors shut, nobody bother me.
She is really worried about whether she's going to get this done or not.
She'll make it.
So...
You've come a long way.
She just, you got to understand that she worries about everything, but...
It's a lot to, it's a lot.
I just want to do it perfect.
There you go, that's okay.
Okay. Anybody have any other comments and questions? If not, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Second.
Motion to adjourn, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.